The Board will now come know order, Madam Clerk, excuse me, Mr. Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Trup, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Bakero, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruisin, Alderman Trup, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Trup, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Villa, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruisin. Seventeen present, we have a quorum.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Reverend John Watson Jr. from Maple Temple Church of God in Christ in the twenty-sixth ward.
Let us pray. He that loveth not, knoweth not God; for God is love. First John four and eight. Gracious God, Heavenly Father, we come in prayer lifting our minds and our hearts unto your holy presence as we begin this year. Assure us that you are with us and that we have a real place in your heart and in your endeavors to bring righteousness and peace and goodwill to our city. We realize that we're all too imperfect and that we have offended you, yet we believe that you're with us, loving us with a love that never let us go and never let us down. In your love we learn, and through your love we find light for our day. Empower us to be our loving guests as we face the task of this day. Amen.
Spin with our regular order of business, take up our Courageous Resolution Calendar. I move for adoption our Courageous Resolution Calendar and entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, Alderman from the fourth, would you like to approach the dais for the presentation of Resolution number two-three-two?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We have a gentleman here by the name of Mr. Ray A. Coleman. And it is said by my colleague Freeman Bosley that a journey of a thousand miles began with one step. This gentleman has made great strides in life and is deserving of this award. Madam Clerk, I mean, Dave, would you, could you read the resolution for me, please? I'm sorry, I didn't, I had no idea. You don't do no reading?
Yes.
Let me do this. Whereas we, the Board of Aldermen, pause to recognize the many accomplishments of Ray A. Coleman, and whereas Ray is a governmental affairs and political consultant, whereas he is an author of Obama phenomenon, yes, we can be a Barack, a spiritual perspective, and Coleman's story. Ray Coleman is currently working on his second book, Have God Will Travel: A Spiritual Journey, The Ray Coleman Story, and whereas Ray worked as a deputy field organizer for the 2012 Obama presidential campaign in South Central Iowa, I was part of that in 2007. Whereas in the presidential Obama 2008 campaign, Ray served as an Illinois steering committee member, and whereas Ray has been featured in several national publications, Ebony Magazine, Sports Illustrated, U.S. News, and The World Report and others, and whereas the former founder of the two not-for-profit organizations, Legacy Keepers and Leadership Alliance Twenty-One, and whereas he and his wife Cynthia have two daughters, Jasmine Rashawn and Rachel Leach. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize and praise the tremendous contributions Ray Coleman has made to his community and the entire country. We further direct the Clerk of this Board to spread a copy of the resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to the honoree at this time and place designated appropriately by the sponsor, introduced on the first day of February 2013. The Honorable Samuel Moore, Fourth Ward, and Honorable Louis Reed, President of the City of the Board of Aldermen in St. Louis. Mr. Ray Coleman, would you step forward, please? This is also the cousin of Erica Brooks. Is it your cousin or your cousin? A masterful photographer. We have the President to say a few words.
Tell you, that is a heck of a resume. And then, prior to the meeting, I had an opportunity to hear some of the other things that Mr. Coleman has done. And he has been just a, the guy's been hard at work, let me just put it that way. And has done some amazing things. And, you know, I know as one St. Louis, and I am very honored to share this dais with you today. And, you know, on behalf of the people of the City of St. Louis who aren't here today to thank you for your many works, I want to thank you on behalf of them also. And one of the things, let me see this resolution. What we tell people is this. You know, this resolution is nothing more than a piece of paper. It is the highest honor the Board of Aldermen has to give. And we give it to people from throughout our community, people all across the United States and even some world leaders that have demonstrated leadership and done things on behalf of our community that we felt, we feel compelled to bring them down here and thank them for it. So, but what it does is that it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this point. So a hundred, two hundred years from now, when they come back and research the history of the City of St. Louis, they'll find your name amongst those records. And they'll know that you passed this way and that you contributed so much so that today we pause in our deliberations to thank you, congratulate you for your many works. So on behalf of the residents of the City of St. Louis, the Board of Aldermen, and my family and friends and everybody I ever met, congratulations, Mr. Coleman. Well, I do want to say that I'm truly honored and humbled by this gracious proclamation that's been bestowed before me today. First of all, I would like to give honor to God, for he's the head of my life. I want to thank the Mayor and Board of Aldermen for this proclamation, especially Alderman Reed and co-sponsor Alderman Moore. I also want to thank my cousin, Erica Brooks, who's also my publicist, and your own Mary Cullens. Two ordinary people behind the scenes doing extraordinary things. In accepting this honor, I do it on behalf of them and many others and many other unsung heroes. Those of us who go day by day getting things done without accolades. When I talk about the Obama phenomenon, yes, we can be Barack, that's who I'm talking about. My book is part memoir, part called A Social and Political Action and a Spiritual Analysis of Obama's Rise to Power. The main message in my book is encouragement for all to live a spiritual life 24/7. So I wrote this book from a spiritual perspective. Every story has a beginning, middle, and end. In the beginning of my book, I separate the word prophet into the Old Testament definition and the New Testament. In the New Testament, the word prophet refers to a person who has received a spiritual gift, enabling him or her to interpret or proclaim truth and does not necessarily involve the element of prediction, as opposed to the Old Testament that defines prophet as men and women divinely called and inspired to deliver God's messages, particularly in relation to future events. The Merriam-Webster Online Dictionary's fourth definition of prophet is "an effective or leading spokesman for a cause, doctrine, or group." In part one of my book, I call Barack a New Testament prophet, and I go on to outline separate occasions when Barack sees the opportunity to speak the truth when some would have chosen the politically safe route. See, I've known Barack since 2003. The first opportunity came in October 2002, when he spoke against the Iraq War. It turned out that arguably, that was the biggest difference between Barack and Hillary Clinton's message during their presidential primary. The second was his call to renewal remarks in 2006, when he spoke of religion's place in politics. And the third came during the Reverend Jeremiah Wright controversy. Barack gave his speech on race called "A More Perfect Union." With the spiritual foundation in place, I got the readers through Barack's journey from U.S. Senator to President and end with a call for all of us to take advantage of this historical time and speak the truth to power, to organize and address issues that confront us all that may not be so comfortable to talk about at times. Today, let us erase the Mississippi River that divides the east from the west side. I am forming a local alliance to work on assisting our President with his legislative agenda while addressing local issues such as crime prevention, safe and healthy schools, and job creation, among others. I'm asking St. Louis to join forces with the Metro East to ask President Obama to come to our region and preferably east St. Louis to talk to us about the solutions to gun violence. To this end, I have founded Leadership Twenty-One Alliance that will work with the Obama campaign's newly formed organizing for action. And finally, I want to end my remarks with the Serenity Prayer by Ryan Holm Nyberg. God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, courage to change the things I can, and wisdom to know the difference, living one day at a time, enjoying one moment at a time, accepting hardships as the pathway to peace, taking as he did this sinful world as it is, not as I would have it, trusting that he will make all things right if I surrender to his will, that I may be reasonably happy in this life and supremely happy with him forever and the next. Amen. I want to thank you, St. Louis. God bless you, and God bless the United States of America. I'd like to move that that resolution be passed in bank. I entertain a second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carry. Mr. Clerk, please make note of that change and prepare another copy of the resolution in bank. Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you had comment? Before we move any further, I'll ask any of the guests of the Board of Aldermen to take, to go to one of the assigned areas. I see the treasurer back there. I appreciate you being here with your new staff members and everything, but we cannot have you stand along that back wall. That is against our rules, so. Hey, Charles? Yeah, thank you. All right. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our Courageous Resolution Calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. That will return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guests, any introduction of our guests. Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would actually like to introduce our new city treasurer, Tashara Jones, and her new staff, Jared Boyd, who is the Chief of Staff and Counsel to the Treasurer, Carl Phillips, who is the Parking Administrator, and Leonard Johnson, who is Deputy Chief of Staff. Thank you.
Any further introductions? Alderman from?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce Anthony Lancia from AGC. And with him today is Charles Mosley, who's a senior at the Construction Careers Academy over here. And then we've got my intern Luke Sappa. Thank you.
Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I am honored to introduce today, we have the plumbers and pipe fitters with us, and we're glad they're here to talk to us today. I want to make sure I say John O'Meara, Mike Olafland, Mark Morgan, Dick Kellet, and David Holmes.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, I'd like to have as my honored guest Gary Otten from the Painters, Celeste from the Realtors, who's here to lecture us, and Leroy Grant as my special guests.
Alderman from the twelfth.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have for my special guest today Ms. Rachel Smith from the Circuit Attorney's Office.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have for my special guest today Ronnie Auer, who's in the leisure room, but he's always welcome to come and join us. Thank you.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, President Reed. I'd like to have as my special guests Joanne Williams and Gary Otten from the Painters District Council.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm feeling particularly frisky this morning, so thank you for recognizing me a second time. I would also like to recognize Chris Pickle from AT&amp;T and Isaiah DeLorenzo from the License Collector's Office, and also Yafet El Amin. Thank you.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, I'd like to wrap up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, as we gather here on the first day of February, the eve of Groundhog Day, where we also celebrate Super Bowl Sunday, the end of football. The groundhog comes out and tells us we have eight more weeks of basketball. It is my pleasure to have as my guest today a resident of the tenth ward, an employee of Sheriff Murphy's wonderful office, and the wife of my committee woman, Mr. Kevin Cloopy.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for approval of the minutes from January eighteenth.
Moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Reporter city officials.
Reporter city officials may be found in Sections A and B of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes. I have from his honor the Mayor the following correspondence. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for reappointment to the Tax Increment Financing Commission, the reappointment of Mr. David Newberger, who resides at forty-nine fifty-four Lindell, apartment eight W six-three-one-zero-eight, and whose term will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor.
Alderman from the thirteen, you recognize on the Mayor's appointment to the Tax Increment Financing Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for approval of David Newberger to the Tax Increment Financing Commission.
Moved by Alderman from the thirteen, second by Alderman from the ninth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Cathedral Square Special Business District. The reappointment of Mr. Wade Crowder, who resides at forty-four sixty-three McPherson, six-three-one-zero-eight, and whose term will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. The appointment of Ms. Claudia Wall, who resides at three-three-six North Newstead, six-three-one-zero-eight, and whose term will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. The reappointment of Dr. Imran E. Hanafi, who resides at forty-four sixty-three McPherson, six-three-one-zero-eight, and whose term will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the Mayor's appointment to the Cathedral Square Special Business District.
Yes, Mr. President. The Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth ward is attending a funeral service this morning, so she asked me to handle this far, since these are in her ward, and therefore I rise to support the Mayor's recommendation.
You'd like to make a motion?
Make a motion to support the Mayor's recommendation.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business District. The appointment of Ms. Deborah Cohen, who resides at thirty-nine forty-three Fairview Avenue, six-three-one-one-six, and whose term will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor.
Alderman from the fifteenth, you recognize on the Mayor's appointment to Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move that we approve the Mayor's appointment to the Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business District, Deborah Cohen.
Moved by Alderman from the fifteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Soulard Special Business District. The appointment of Mr. Jack Coder, who resides at twenty-five oh-four A South Twelve Street, six-three-one-zero-four, and whose term will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the Mayor's appointment to the Soulard Special Business District.
Yes, Mr. President. The Alderwoman from the seventh is absent as well. I assure you all, my two deskmates back here, that I have taken a shower this morning. But in her absence, I respectfully move that we approve the Mayor's recommendation of Jack Qatar.
Moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the St. Louis Public Library Board of Directors. The appointment of Ms. Rachel Boyers, who resides at nine fifteen Olive, number sixteen oh-three, six-three-one-zero-one, and whose term will expire on June first, two thousand sixteen. The appointment of Ms. Nina North Murphy, who resides at thirty-four forty-seven Pestalozzi, six-three-one-one-eight, and whose term will expire on June first, two thousand sixteen. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor.
Alderman from the sixteen, you recognize on the Mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Public Library Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to adopt the appointment of the Mayor to the St. Louis Public Library Board.
Moved by Alderman from the sixteen, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Is that the end of?
Yes, that is the extent of the report of city officials.
We dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items eight through, eight through twelve. Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of the Legislation Committee. Board Bill One Seventy-two Committee Substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, Cone, French, and Bakero, and ordinance amending ordinance six-eight-nine-three-four establishing a policy for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officers and containing a severability and emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Ninety-seven Committee Substitute, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen Kennedy, Cone, President Reed, Trup, Flowers, Bosley, Moore, Hubbard, Davis, French, Boyd, Carter, Williamson, Bakero, Arnowitz, and Howard, and ordinance repealing ordinance six-eight-four-one-two pertaining to the City Public Works Projects Tax Increment Finance Projects and St. Louis City Bonded Projects containing definitions, construction workforce development and compliance fee, implementation and administration, waivers, exceptions, noncompliance, nondiscrimination policy requirement, reporting requirements, severability clause, and effective date. Reported out of the Public Safety Committee. Board Bill Two-Eighty-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruisin, Alderman Kennedy, Williamson, Rhodey, and ordinance pertaining to the Central West End Historic District inhabiting as its subject matter the boundary and regulations and standards for the Central West End Historic District and providing new standards for the Central West End Historic District. Board Bill Two-seventy-eight, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance pertaining to the forty-one through forty-three hundred blocks of Lindell Historic District and providing new standards for the forty-one hundred through forty-three hundred Lindell Historic District. Board Bill Two-Ninety Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance repealing ordinance six-nine-zero-zero-six and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor license for any currently nonlicensed premises within the boundaries of the Eighteenth Ward Liquor Control District containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Ninety-three, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any three a.m. closing permits for any currently non-three a.m. license within the boundaries of the Twenty-Fourth Ward Liquor Control District containing an emergency clause. The following bills were reported out of the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bill Two-seventy, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Mayor and Compteur of the City to execute a quick claim deed to KLR, KATO, LLC for certain city-owned property located in city block five-six-four E, which property is known as twelve-eleven North Tucker Boulevard, upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum of $200,000 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Eighty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, and ordinance approving the petition of an owner of real property to establish a community improvement district, establishing a union station community improvement district containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Eighty-six, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, and ordinance authorizing the St. Louis City Board of Election Commissioners upon approval of the Board of Estiment and Portionment to expend any funds received by the City Board of Election Commissioners from the Voting System Grant for Assistance in Meeting and Maintaining Title III Requirements listed in HAVA public law and from the MCVR Voter List Efficiency Grant for assistance in approving and utilizing the Missouri Centralized Voter Registration System, MCVR, to fulfill the obligations of said grants and containing emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Eighty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Wessels, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a cooperation agreement and authorizing reimbursement in accordance herewith and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Ninety-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, and ordinance authorizing the Board of Public Service to enter into a cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the city to contribute to the commission for the installation of aesthetic lighting on the new Mississippi River Bridge containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Forty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance amending ordinance six-seven-zero-one-three by modifying the terms of real estate abatement in the Van de Benner Finney, Washington, Taylor redevelopment area. Board Bill Two-seventy-three, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from C Multiple Family Dwelling District to the G Local Commercial and Office District for fifteen-twenty-three, fifteen-twenty-five, fifteen-twenty-nine Bacon and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-seventy-four, sponsored by Alderman Cone, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Ortmann, and ordinance recommended by the City Planning Commission pertaining to the zoning code containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Eighty-two, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, and ordinance approving the blighting study and redevelopment plan for twenty-seven oh-seven Rochenbach containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Ninety-one, sponsored by Alderman Villa, and ordinance designating a portion of the city as redevelopment area known as the Crown Elect Coke Redevelopment Area pursuant to the Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act containing a severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Health and Human Services Committee. Board Bill Two-seventy-five, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen Cone, Arnowitz, Young, Ogilvy, Kennedy, French, Flowers, and Davis, and ordinance making it unlawful to possess marijuana, providing an exception for lawfully prescribed medical marijuana, containing a severability clause and penalty clause and effective date clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill Two-ninety-six, sponsored by Alderman Moore and Kennedy, and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Van de Benner Spur at the North Curb Line of Dr. Martin Luther King and on the South Curb Line of the East-West Alleyway between Dr. Martin Luther King and Aldine, and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Transportation Committee. Board Bill Two-ninety-two, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen Kennedy, President Reed, Trup, Flowers, Bosley, Moore, Hubbard, Davis, French, Boyd, Williamson, Carter, Arnowitz, Cone, Bakero, Schmidt, and ordinance authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Metropolitan Sewer District and the St. Louis County to expand municipal revenues for the purpose of commissioning a disparity study containing a severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Neighborhood Development Committee. Board Bill Two-eleven, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplett, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan of twenty-one, four-twenty-one thirty-one California. Board Bill Two-twelve, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplett, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-seven twenty-three Russell. Board Bill Two-forty-one, sponsored by Alderwoman Triplett, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-nine twelve Shenandoah. Board Bill Two-fifty-three, sponsored by Alderman Ortmann, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for twenty-nine ten Indiana and containing a severability clause. study and redevelopment plan for twenty-nine ten Indiana, and containing severability clause. Board Bill two fifty-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-six twelve fourteen Hartford. Board Bill two sixty-six, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a blighting study redevelopment plan for forty-two seventy-four Flag, containing severability clause. Board Bill two sixty-seven, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for forty-nine fifty-four Chippewa. Board Bill two sixty-eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for twenty-three twenty-five and containing severability clause. Board Bill two sixty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for forty-one thirty-six thirty-eight Flag, containing severability clause. Board Bill two seventy-one, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for forty-two fifty-one fifty-three Russell, containing severability clause. Board Bill two seventy-two, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for twenty-six twenty-one through twenty-three South Eleven Street, containing severability clause. Board Bill two seventy-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida, and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for thirty-five thirty Utah, containing severability That is the extent of second readings.
Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill two eighteen, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Creusen, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to provide for the establishment of a Central West End form-based district containing severability clause and effective date clause. Board Bill two forty-six, sponsored by Alderman Trup, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from B to Family Dwelling District and F Neighborhood Commercial District to the B to Family Dwelling District only, in city block four-four-nine-four, thirty-one hundred through eighteen North Kings Highway, containing emergency clause. Board Bill two sixty-five, sponsored by Alderman Trup, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Williamson, President Reed, Alderman Carter, and Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the fifteen-hundred block of North Union as Bishop Lawrence M. Wooton Boulevard. Board Bill one oh-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel in an irregular portion of Compton adjacent to city block twenty-one sixty-one beginning at Shoto. Board Bill two thirty-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate public service rights for travel in one Virginia Avenue from Caroline Street northwardly, three hundred and twenty feet to the point being the northern right-of-way of Rutgers Street, and a portion of Virginia Avenue previously to Virginia Avenue from Caroline Street southwardly, one hundred and twenty-four feet to a point beginning at the northern right-of-way line of East-West Alley and city blocks twenty-one fifty-seven-n and twenty-one sixty-six in the city. Board Bill two sixty, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic at North Crest Lane at the South Curb Line of Goodfellow Boulevard, and containing emergency clause. Board Bill two eighty-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing and directing the Department of Streets to enter into a contract between the city and Union Electric Company for street and outdoor lighting service for certain facilities within the territorial limits of the city, and containing emergency clause. Board Bill two eighty-four, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the twenty-thirteen St. Louis Works and the Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Programs, containing a public emergency clause. Board Bill two eighty-nine, sponsored by Alderwoman Behringer, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to amend Section One of Ordinance six-nine-two-three-seven, revising the legal description of the East-West Alley in city block sixty-one ninety as bounded by Chippewa, Donovan, and Lansdowne. That is the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. That's the extent of the perfection consent calendar. We would dispense with line item sixteen, third reading consent.
Board Bill two eighty, Committee Substitute. Board Bill two eighty-one, Committee Substitute. Board Bill two sixty-one. Board Bill two sixty-two.
Alderman from the third...
Board Bill two sixty-three. Board Bill two sixty-four. Board Bill two seventy-six. Board Bill two seventy-seven. That is the extent of third reading consent calendar.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the ninth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call... Mr. Clerk, sorry. Mr. Clerk, please call roll. Sorry about that.
Alderman Trup. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Coen. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Creusen. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Young. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Creusen. Twenty-three aye votes, zero no votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion on Alderman from the thirteenth, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of enrollments.
Board Bill one sixty, Committee Substitute, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman and alderwomen Moore, Kennedy, French, Ogilvy, Williamson, Bosley, and Schmidt, and ordinance pertaining to mortgage foreclosure intervention containing penalty severability and emergency clauses.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the third reading, finally pass it, Board Bill one sixty, Committee Substitute.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. Would you place this on the informal calendar?
Mr. Clerk, could you please place Board Bill number one sixty, Committee Substitute, on third reading, informal calendar?
So noted.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill two eighty, Committee Substitute. Two eighty-one, Committee Substitute. Two sixty-one. Two sixty-two. Two sixty-three. Two sixty-four. Two seventy-six. And two seventy-seven.
All other business being suspended, the president shall, on open session, affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law.
We have none.
Announcements?
Tuesday, February fifth, a Ways and Means meeting at nine AM in the Leisure Room. Friday, February eighth, full board meeting in chambers. The plumbers and pipe fitters will be providing lunch for Alderman and staff immediately following the full board meeting today in the Kennedy Room, room two oh eight. That is the extent of announcements.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth?
Mr. President, members of the... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. He was up a little bit earlier before you...
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Two weeks from now, February fourteenth, there's a national event that has some local activities. It's the One Billion Rising, which is an event to raise awareness and work for prevention of violence against women. It's on Valentine's Day. It's happening across the nation. The St. Louis event is at the History Museum. Begins at four-thirty on February fourteenth, and I think it could be a great event for a lot of us to attend. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Alderman from the twentieth?
Mr. President, members of the board, public safety is scheduled to meet on Wednesday at two PM for any outstanding board bills and an update on public safety in room two thirty, because it'll just be a small meeting at two PM on Wednesday.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-first?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the wake of all the violence that's been going on the last couple of weeks, we're having an emergency town hall meeting tomorrow morning, Saturday at ten AM at the Rec Center, to deal with a lot of the violence. We've had three homicides in our area in the last seven days, including one this morning. So it is a crisis in our community, and we're bringing everybody together. So please come to the Rec Center tomorrow morning at ten AM.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the nineteenth?
Thank you. I'd like to share with those that know Dr. Ronaldo Anderson at Harris Stowe. He'll be speaking today at two PM at AMSO, and his topic is Afrocentratism in today's era. And I think it will be quite interesting, because he's going to mesh everything that's going on with the understanding of the history, as well as today's politics and everything else. So today at two PM at AMSO, if you have an opportunity to go hear him. Also tomorrow at ten AM, there will be a health fair at Boshan High School in partnership with St. Louis University. And for those who are veterans, whether you're active or inactive, St. Louis has been chosen to be one of the regional places that will have a free concert again for the veterans on February fifteenth. Along with that, there is a free raffle for a sixty-inch color TV and a Ford, two thousand thirteen Ford. So the last hundred tickets that will be distributed will happen on February fourth. So get in touch with the VA Center, the Public Relations Office, at John Cochran or at Jefferson Barracks, if you want to get one of those tickets that's left. But come to the concert. It's going to be Motown miracles experience. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the thirteenth, Alderman from the fourth, you have an announcement?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. On February the twenty-first, the Fourth Ward is having a... It's ward meeting. It's about the service providers, all those that provide a service for the constituency in the Fourth Ward. All the questions that they ask the Alderman, they can now ask the service providers, all the heads of the various departments. On the twenty-fourth of February, the Sumner High School is having this roundup from one to three. It's a joyous occasion you all should be involved in. And while you're off this session, planning and strategizing about what goes on in this city, consider the Fourth Ward. Workforce, whatever force, when you work, why should we have to force somebody to let us have jobs and to work? So while you're thinking along those lines and strategizing, consider the Fourth Ward, including us in all the endeavors that go on in this city. We are part of this city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse you, Alderman, from the seventh, twenty-seventh, twenty-second, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth wards, due to necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the eleventh, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, ten AM, February eighth.
Move by Alderman from the thirteenth, second by Alderman from the eleventh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, stand adjourned.